Okay, all right, so we will call the meeting to order uh seven oh seven and we'll stand do the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and public hearing, is there any public hearing? All right, moving on. Um, we have some minutes to approve um November nineteenth. So if we can have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November nineteen.
I think we approve the minutes.
All second.
Okay. Any um, any discussion? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, great, okay, uh, we have some warrants to approve. Um, I'm gonna ask that we separate out the secondary and do um secondary as its own batch. But I'll entertain doing the rest of them together if people wanna do that, or we can separate them out by payroll and then vendor.
I move um payroll one one one, one one two, vendor invoices uh one oh one six, one oh one seven, and one oh one eight.
As a batch, okay. Is there a second?
All second.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, um, secondary um. Rural aid is considered a grant, a grant? Okay, all right, so we have two grants, rural aid and the REAP grant. Um, we'll need a motion and a second to accept those, those monies.
So moved.
All second.
So rural aid is thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, the REAP is fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, it's nice when we can accept money. Um, report of the Gilmanagou representative.
Hi there, Jen Motrowa, how are you? Um, so, and the production of the Mean Girls Junior Crew, uh, I don't know if anyone went to see it, it was um an excellent production. They did four of them, um, and they earned uh a raise about sixty-three hundred dollars. Um, the Gilmanagou Regional School District Math Interventionists, um, they were accepted to present at the U.S. Math Recovery uh Council National Conference in Virginia um from May sixth to May eighth. Uh, not only will they be able to showcase what they're doing within their district, but they're also have the opportunity to attend other sessions. That's gonna enrich and elevate mathematical teaching practices. Uh, these sessions will provide them with the chance to network and collaborate with peers from across this country, uh, participate in advanced professional development within the math recovery community, and learn from math educators, researchers, math recovery coaches, and other educators. It's a great opportunity. Um, and also the uh Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council. Uh, today they actually um prepared and distributed food boxes for forty district families. Um, in addition, they also received a bunch of donations um from people as well. And the winter concert is on January twenty-second. That's it, thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? Okay.
Um, the Franklin County Tech Representatives, uh, Jackie couldn't be here, she did send us an email.
I believe she did, right? Um, I'm going to um suggest that things that aren't in person, that we've already received as information, that we kind of maybe highlight a couple of the points, but not need to read verbatim. This will be on the website um for anybody who wants to read it. Is everyone okay with that? Just to keep things moving along, okay. Was there, did you have it pulled up?
Yeah.
Okay, was there anything that you just felt like you needed to highlight, especially if it pertained to tonight? Otherwise, we can, probably just the last part.
Uh, oh, they had the pro FOMO two thousand twenty-six budget presentation, and there will be a three percent increase to member towns.
So that's something that we'll be thinking about when we look at, look at our secondary budget, our Gilmoni- our tech school. Dollar amount. Um, okay. Uh, Collaborative for Educational Services report?
That is me, so we just had a meeting on December eleventh. Um, it was a relatively quick meeting once we got a quorum, which took twenty, twenty-five minutes. It was really fun, but good thing it was virtual. Um, so, once we got a quorum, we were able to go over the FY twenty-four annual audit of the budget and of spending, um, and so the collaborative realized that they were approximately two million dollars in a deficit in FY twenty-four. Um, and it's promoting just critical discussion on necessary steps to ensure long-term financial stability. Um, they remain financially sound and wanted to make that very clear. They do have a fund, fund balance of two point eight million and cumulative surplus of a hundred and seventy thousand. They also own their buildings, and so there's like, you know, properties and stuff like that. So they wanted to make sure that everyone really understood that they are financially sound, that this happened for many different reasons. And some of those contributing factors were that um there were end-of-year accounting adjustments. So there were some deferrals and vacation carryover and depreciation benefit reconciliations. Um, and so stuff that they didn't, oh, sorry, not fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, I need to make this bigger, sorry. Uh, clearly, uh, so that was like, you know, a big part of that. Um, they also had the expiration of ESER funds that led to reduced district spending power, dramatically impacting their fee-for-service programs. Um, there, they hit kind of that funding cliff where schools aren't able to get all of the stuff that they previously were purchasing as far as um resources, because that money from the schools had expired. There was a significant decline in grant availability. There was also more competitiveness, and the size of the grants were different. And a, there was a significant drop in allowable administrative indirect rates on grants through DESI. So from historically eight percent, it dropped down to two point seven percent in FY twenty-four, which really impacted um their shared services and stuff like that. So to make up for that, they are going through some op- um operational changes. There have been some staffing gaps in the business office due to turnover and people leaving, so they have um worked on that. And part of the staffing gaps that they had to deal with at the end of last year, also, they had a lot of temporary employees to kind of make up for some of that, which also added to that deficit. So um their financial and strategic responses are budget adjustments for FY twenty-five. And they have reduced positions, raised fees for services to offsite, offset declining revenue streams, and reorganizing across multiple departments, saving them approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this year's budget. They're also putting a freeze on general fund spending, except for critical purchases in FY twenty-five. And they wanted to make sure that that, that it is known that that's not happening with their grants. So if they have grants and they have money within those grants, like, they're spending that. But um their general fund, they're kind of decreasing that right now. And then they are having discussions with DESI leadership and collaborative organizations to address the um adverse impact of the new restricted indirect rate calculation that impacted them. So we got to hear the whole audit from the outside auditor saying like, and reiterating that they are in good shape. Everything looked good, has, you know, obviously a two million dollar deficit isn't ideal, but there are, are planned to move forward with that, and we're still, they are still in good standing. So that was the majority of the meeting, kind of going through that audit. We also um were voting on accepting the annual report, and then that's gonna be come out and be um published. So once that's out, I'll share that with everyone. And then we approved minutes and their hires and separations, and then we called it a night. So um, that was about it.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Um, regionalization update. No update, thank you. Capital Planning Committee?
Yes, let me. See if I can pull that up. Wanna go to the principals report?
I can, yeah, sure, we can.
Cause we might need to vote, so I just wanna make sure I have the right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to the superintendent's report then, okay? Everybody okay with that? We'll just, and we'll circle back. Um, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so we have interim uh principal Beth Gannon has assumed her leadership responsibilities effective twelve-two. Uh, she is immersing herself in the Irving School Community. Um, and on the Union Twenty-Eight Leadership Team, we're very happy to have her um on our team. Uh, Irving Elementary will be having a site visit from the Mass School Building Authority, or they're designee, they actually contract out in January. And so they um, the focus of that is they are supposed to visit every school in the Commonwealth every four years and do a facility update. And they wanna make sure that all students are being educated in a safe learning environment. They have an extensive survey um that Principal Gannon and um Eric Harris, our head custodian, have been compiling. We will have a interview, they're gonna do it virtually um in January, which they have told us to allot three hours for. So I'm hoping that that is um not accurate, um, but we have begun that process. We will not get their formal report until the end of twenty twenty-five. So um it will not be timely feedback. Um, we recently had Common Jobs Day on December eleventh for all Union Twenty-Eight staff at Irving Elementary participated. Common Jobs Day is an opportunity for instructional staff in shared positions or grade levels to work together on content-specific best practice that supports student learning experiences. One of the challenges in small schools is a limited ability to network and work with professionals that serve in the same capacity. The coordination of this professional development opportunity was led by Lindsay Rodriguez, our curriculum coordinator, and supported by all school-based administration. Uh, representatives, members from each Union Twenty-Eight School Committee um will work with myself and Caitlin Sheridan to examine the efficiency report that was completed in the fall of twenty twenty-three by the Collins Foundation at UMass. The goal will be to determine what, if any, recommendations can be implemented to foster efficient practices within the union to help maintain and leverage resources appropriately. Mark, I believe you have agreed to serve on that committee, correct?
Yeah.
Um, I have continued my work with the new teacher, uh, new um superintendent induction program sponsored by Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. In addition, I attended Franklin County Superintendent Steering Committee meetings and have taken part in the ready um training sponsored by the Department of Elementary Education uh and Secondary Education. Um, the focus of that training is on how to build programs and learning environments that support all students. Um, I survived my first snow day, um, and um I'm happy about that. Um, I have presented my goals to the Joint School Committee, and I've made them available. They'll be posted online um to guide me in the next year.
Excellent, um, when you, it's not up on the website yet, is it?
I like the corrections, yeah.
Thanks. It threw me off, I'm like, wait, what? Excellent, any questions for Shannon? All right, I can move on or circle back?
Yeah, we can circle back.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, time line.
Thing in front of me.
So you, you're, you're reporting on quite a bit. Okay, so we're gonna circle back to the uh capital planning report, uh, capital planning committee update, sorry.
Sounds good, so we met on Wednesday, December eleventh. Um, and we started talking about, and Shannon, feel free to chime in if, if you want. Um, but I know that Shannon, Brian, and Caitlin all met with um, or attended a meeting with the MS.
MSBA.
MSBA, there we go, um, about their accelerated program for building repairs. Um, and they, we had a list of questions that we kind of put together as a committee meeting before to find out answers to, and essentially, we got a little bit of information on how their grants work and how intricate they are, and how they want things done a certain way. And we, if we have to follow it in order to then be eligible for the grant. They also, you know, we apply in, say, this spring. We find out if we're even considered in the fall of twenty-five, and that would be after a site visits, and it's very competitive and everything else. And then we would find out if we were accepted for the grant not until two thousand twenty-six. So it is a very long process. Um, we feel that it's still worth going through, but knowing that it is a long process, and there are a lot of moving parts with that. Um, they did find out that reimbursement rate of overall project is around forty-four percent, but they can then determine what parts of that project qualify for that reimbursement. So just because that might be what they are reimbursing, they get to pick and choose from the overall project what they're gonna cover with that reimbursement. Um, so it doesn't mean that we get to choose what project we're doing, and then it's approved, and then they, you know, pay that forty-four percent. Um, they also recommended looking into securing local funding or other, any other lo- you know, funding opportunities and applying for that as well. We're kind of, I think, right on that cusp of being eligible due to the age of the building and the roof and everything. So we're, you know, teetering on that, where there are definitely other buildings in the state that are older and worse off. So we kind of have to keep that in mind. Um, as a committee, um, we were recommending that we still move forward. Um, so uh, we, in order to even find out what this project is gonna cost and what it's gonna look like as we discussed the last meeting, because it's gonna be over one point five million dollar project, we have to have an OPM and a designer. Um, MSBA did say that we, they, we need to use their people and follow their rules. However, knowing that that timeline is so far away, we as a committee are recommending that we still move forward with the process of finding or hiring an OPM and a designer and finding out, you know, what is actually needed. Is there um internal structural damage that we don't know about? Like, we need someone that's really can look at the bigger picture, look at the project, and kind of tell us what needs to be done, what it's gonna cost, what are some solutions and stuff. And we don't feel that we can wait till two thousand twenty-six to start that process. We feel like we need to start that process, get the ball moving, and figure out some numbers. And that will also help support the grant writing and hopefully make that stronger, because we'll have a lot more in- information that we can add to that. And it's gonna help us get a more accurate amount out to the town sooner than later. Um, and so with that being said, we are recommending that we move forward um with the town and submitting a, oh, I'm gonna say the word wrongs, um, funding for a capital project of hiring an OPM and a designer allotting up to two hundred thousand dollars. Did I say that right?
I believe that is correct.
Yeah, if I can speak to that timeline. So in the ex- an accelerated repair seems a little bit of a, probably not the correct word based on the timeline. But um, they said in December, an invitation that would say the applications are open would happen. That came yesterday. Um, and that just means that you can now start the process. They'll be, we must submit it by the end of March. Our, our statement, our statement of interest.
Yep.
And then they will tell us by December of twenty twenty-five if we are invited to apply based on the statement of interest. So then we would apply at the beginning, at the end of twenty twenty-five, and they would make their decision in mid-two thousand twenty-six about if they're, what projects they're going to fund. So that, you know, to Caitlin's point, um, if we do get into this project, we will have to use their OPM and designer. We will not be able to use what we've already done. But there is the real chance that if we are not selected, we've waited two years and not moved forward at all. And we do have some, we have, um, for example, we had a classroom that had to be moved to an alternate location because they didn't have heat for two weeks while we were getting it fixed. Um, and so I think there are some, and there's been some documented over the past few years of some issues where we should probably look into that. Um, and as Caitlin said, the recommendation was even worst case scenario, worst best-case scenario that we invest as a town two hundred thou- up to two hundred thousand for the OPM and designer, and then get this, get funded through this project and have to do that piece again. The information we gather from that investment will help us have a stronger application. Um, and the maximum rate, as Caitlin said, is that they will fund up to forty-four percent. So that's sort of where we're at, and that was the recommendation of the Capital Planning Committee.
And Brian did share that when we are writing these kind of um openings of people, you know, when we put out to bid who we're looking for and making up these contracts, we can be very specific to say, this is phase one, and this is all we're hiring you for right now. And if we choose to move forward, we can, if we choose to stop it there, we can. And so he has made it very clear. And so he has made it very clear that, you know, we can, we have control over that. And he will help and support us if that's the decision we want to make so that we can kind of cover ourselves as well.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea, to be doing it in phases like that. So, so you said the Capital Planning Committee support, of this committee?
The school, no, the school committee's Capital Planning Committee.
To move it forward to the capital planning.
Of the town.
And then the town will have to decide.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So what is the timeline looking like for that? We kind of, we kind of have two different legs moving, so the grant leg and then our in-the meantime leg. And what is that timeline looking like?
So we would have to submit to the town through their application process for capital planning. And then they either fund it or don't.
Yeah, but I mean, like, so are we thinking like with the next?
As soon as we need kind of, well, it has to be submitted, what, by the eight? Caitlin was already kind of working on it. So she was waiting for us to either choose to go forward or choose not to go forward before actually hitting submit. But essentially, I think there's maybe a talk of a special town meeting or something that's gonna have to happen anyways, and this would kind of be on that agenda to vote if it's approved. And then once that's approved, we would then put it out to, I don't know the full process, but like, put it out to bid, hire these people, make sure it's on our, like, it's still gonna be a process, but it would be more of like a, you know, six-month timeline versus a two-year timeline.
Yeah, no, I, I, and thank you for that. I meant literally just for this next step.
Oh, we vote, yes or no, and then it gets sent to the town, I think, this week or next week? No, exactly, and then decisions move on from there. So we're part of that, like, annual planning submission process.
Just a second. Do you know what the deadline is for the next, do you know?
Okay, I thought it was the 18th.
I was gonna say that, which is why Caitlin has it ready to go.
Right.
If this, you know, just trying to hedge our bets.
And they are aware that this is going on, so it's not.
So when do we have to submit it?
By tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
No, no, how, when do we have to submit for the next?
Have a request for this year or do tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow.
So it sounds like Caitlin has it ready. She's, this is the last piece before she can submit it. So what she's submitting is just that we want to make a request to the Capital Planning. We are not...
Add that to their discussion.
Okay, we are not, we are not allocating any of school budget. We are not doing anything other than saying that we have this, we want you guys to look at.
This is what we're thinking the cost is gonna be. We would like, we're requesting up to $200,000 for this process.
Okay.
Can I move that we send this request to the Capital Planning Committee of the town?
Yep, I'll second it.
All right.
Oh, wait, yeah, can, I can do that, right? Because I made the motion. Or he's technically making the motion.
You're just seconding it, yeah. Do we have any other discussion about this?
Nope.
That was pretty much it.
Yep, okay, all right. So all in favor? Aye. All right, so we will let, can you let Caitlin know to go ahead, please, to make sure that that gets?
And I will note.
I'm having trouble hearing at home.
Oh.
Just so I, I don't know who I tell that to.
Okay.
Probably people from the, I mean, you could ask them, is it people from the audience or?
Yeah, so if, if you, if anybody wants to speak, if they could just come up to the, to the microphone and we'll all try and just speak up a little bit. It sounds like some people at home are having trouble hearing us. So I think in general, we'll all put our loud voices on and everybody else will go ahead to the microphone.
I just want to add.
I was gonna say that, but we're not, we're not all teachers.
That, that $200,000 amount is not just a random number from the sky. I probably should have added that before. We did a lot of reviewing of what other OPMs and designers cost for other projects throughout the state. And then I also, we spoke with Brian to say, hey, does this seem reasonable, realistic? Because we want to be in the right ballpark and not having to, like, go ask for more or something like that. So between all of those different sources, that was the number that everyone felt was reasonable, realistic, and would get the job done. So that's what we're hoping for.
Okay, that seems great. All right, so again, you'll make sure that, convey that to Caitlin.
I will.
Perfect.
We're still Capital Planning.
Yes, okay, yep.
What about any, what about the blinds?
Yep, we're still on Capital Planning.
Okay.
So then the other one to possible vote is, they're still trying to figure out how to best purchase the blinds because the project is right around that $50,000 mark, which then triggers some other things. And we have to look if it falls under a state contract. And if it does, we have to follow that. And if it doesn't, we have to follow some other things. So it's being recommended that we submit the blind project to Capital Planning, the town Capital Planning Project with an estimated value of $50,000. Once again, Caitlin has it ready to go. She, we just wanna bring that to the committee and let the committee know that that's the most recent estimate from, I think it was like three months ago, was around that 48, 50,000 mark. And so we just wanna cover our basis and make sure that we're following all the rules on how we go to make that happen. And so that was what was recommended.
So I move we bring that to the Capital Planning, the town Capital Planning Committee? $50,000 towards the blinds project.
I'll second that.
Is, is the history of this, that the Capital Planning knew about it, sort of spent going along for some time, so we're re, sort of resubmit?
Yeah, so what had happened was it was submitted to Capital Planning probably three to five years ago. I'll check that up. And it was approved and it was $30,000. And then it just sat, and I think COVID might have had to do with it, leadership changes. And so the Capital Planning Committee at the town felt like $30,000 probably wasn't gonna get the job done anymore. And so they put the money back in some fund or however that works. And then said if that is still a need to reapply. And we need an updated quote and we need all these things. So we got an updated quote. It's at, it's now teetering like 50,000 and so we're going forward with that process again.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to move, move that forward to the Capital Planning Committee, the town's Capital Planning Committee. Any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so again, you'll put that word up. Excellent, thank you.
And then the, oh my, let me just make sure.
It might be worth making updated, giving the update about where the playground stands. To discuss that because that's not.
Yes.
There is, yeah, we're searching for people.
So essentially, the person, or do you want to speak on it? I don't want to, okay.
So we are trying to have a, just inspection and evaluation of our current playground structure. The person who was recommended, who's done a lot in the area, is no longer doing anything other than new construction. And so he's given me a couple of people that, that still do current instruction. And they have not, we're playing, I'm playing phone tag with one and one has not called me back. So that's where we stand. Apparently, that's a great business to be in right now because they're very in demand.
Yeah. I wonder when next you meet with your kind of superintendent group? If you could put that out as a question to the group and see who they use? And possibly the collaborative and see if they might know anybody? Just because they work with a lot of schools too, they might.
And then we did talk about the storage containers. And Shannon is in the process of seeing the quality of what is in the storage containers and...
Yeah, I think that's...
Oh, that's on the agenda. Okay, so I won't even talk about that. But we did talk about it. At Capital Planning Subcommittee, just for, you know, financially and stuff like that. So that was kind of all we talked about on that. A lot of great things moving forward. I do appreciate this group and like that it is a consistent meeting every month. And I feel like we're really making progress now in strides towards some of our capital planning needs and agenda, so.
Excellent, good. All right, I'm glad we have that up and running. So next is the Director of Finance and Operations Report. I know Caitlin is not here. And so that was sent, I believe that was the other part that was sent to us, right? That's her, this is her report.
The written report on that budget.
So again, this will be on the website. Anybody who'd like to read it. One thing I'd just like to highlight is I'm happy to hear, although I don't recall having this be part of a discussion, is the, I'm just trying to find it, sorry, the frontline system. I'm happy to hear that. I know, I, I, I think that the town hall will also be happy with that. It's a much better process than what we are currently using. So I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to see that we're finally moving to that.
Slowly, we're getting there.
Is there a start date on that?
So we are, the rollout starts, they've already started the training for the people who need to know. It will be starting to roll out, and I believe Irving might be the first school, in February. And then it's sort of like every month we're adding. And so this is going to be a, entire union.
And so we're, again, it, it helped me remember where this was a discussion and a decision to make this union, why, do you?
So we are, we're just consolidating the systems that were already in place.
Well, frontline is brand new for Irving.
Right, but that, I, I don't, I couldn't tell you where that exactly happened. It was an ongoing discussion before I got here, I believe.
Before you.
But we're trying to, some schools were using Power School, some are using frontline, and trying to streamline our, what is the most efficient.
We were using a piece of paper.
We were.
Which is why I say.
So we're, we're trying to make it a more efficient practice and still stay, you know, we're, we're not changing any funding or anything else, but just trying to allocate some of the processes we were using.
Well, well, I have to assume, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, well, the frontline is gonna charge something to use their program, so...
It is, it is.
That is new for Irving, so where is that? And this might be Caitlin's question.
It might be Caitlin's question.
I am, I am curious where that is showing up in our budget? And whether it's a Union 28 budget or whether it's our local budget, and if so, where it would be.
I will get the answer to that. I, I don't want to miss, I think I know, but I don't want to misspeak. And Caitlin's probably home watching stressing, saying, don't say the wrong thing.
So yeah, if you could let me know that, you can just even email me that answer. But again, I am happy to see that we are, we are moving in this direction. Anything else, anybody else wanted to know in that report?
Nope.
All right, so we are gonna keep on moving. And we are up to the Principal's Report. Oh, I'm sorry, one second, I apologize. I just want to make sure there was no other questions about any of the expenditures or the budgets. Okay, I mean, I didn't want to skip over that in case people wanted to ask about that. All right, thank you.
Sure, no, it's gonna be a minute to get this logged in. I can.
Sure.
Not that I'm not really loud, I was amazing, so. If you just want me to click?
Yeah.
All right.
While we're waiting, I'd like to say that your report is very colorful, very fancy, nice graphics.
Sure, I like to make sure that something is visible at home. And so it's a little easier for people to see if I've got a presentation that goes with it.
Sure, all right.
And as a middle school teacher, microphones can be a little uncomfortable.
We're just a loud group anyway.
You also can tilt that down closer to you if that was more comfortable.
Because I'm super short. It's okay.
I would too, so.
So I have four areas that we're gonna be talking about this evening as a part of my report. We'll go, we'll cover our school council, the Mass Cultural Arts Grant that we've received for an artist in residence, our community initiatives around engaging our police department and the upcoming DARE program, and then finally fostering relationships and outreach to other aspects of the community. We're very excited about all of it. So our first aspect is that our school committee, at this point, is well underway as of the school council. As of today, has a full set of membership. We are very excited. And we have tentatively made the decision as a collective group that we will be holding meetings on Google Meet to make it accessible. We, as of tomorrow or Thursday, the latest, because I'm waiting to talk to Brian, it will be posted as a part of the open meeting law so that everyone is aware of when it will be. Our target date is the end of the, or middle end of the second week in January. And that's only because we need to let a certain number of days go by. And I'm unclear about the holiday days and how that will impact the number of days I need to have it posted before we can hold a meeting. So that is our delay on that. Brian is also supporting me on finding a community member that can sit as a representative to the committee as well. We talked about the fact that I do need someone who is a non-relation to anyone here at the building. So it can't be a parent or grandparent. It's gotta be someone who lives in the community but doesn't have anyone coming to school here. So we will, he's working on helping me with that. But I'm excited to say I have outreach to all of the families. They are ready to go in the beginning of January. They've already seen our tentative agenda. Our topics for the January meeting are pretty meaty. We are gonna hit the school handbook, the school improvement plan, and our budget at the very first meeting. And a piece of that comes from the fact that these were meetings that should have begun back in October. I personally like to begin them back in September. And so this is our opportunity to get them underway and to really begin the process and try to move as exponentially as possible and ensure that we are doing our due diligence for all areas of this. So I'm really excited about that piece. And again, I feel as though the parents' decision to recommend using Google Meet to expand the number of people who could attend the open meeting certainly was one that was worth pursuing. So I'm excited that we're gonna be doing that. We are, as you may see in the, or hopefully you will see in the January around...
Can I just ask a quick question?
Oh, so sorry, yes.
Just out of curiosity, how many teachers and parents do you have?
So we have four parents that were elected. All of them will participate in meetings. Two of them will be voting members at the, at this time. And we have two teachers. And then we have, we'll have a community member.
Yep.
And so if we, as we can gather and bring more people on, I already have the parents there. And so they can participate in. If a parent is absent for any reason, there's always a backup person present to participate.
Awesome. Yeah, we went from like zero to this, so that's wonderful.
Yes, very excited about that. It moved pretty quickly. Once I started reaching out to people, we were able to get everybody up and running very quickly.
That's very exciting.
Yes. The Mass Cultural, you will see in the January around town is that we have been awarded a $5,000 Festivals and Projects Grant for 2025 from Mass Cultural Council. We are very excited. We are gonna be working with a, Vanessa Kirby was our art teacher who did this grant, by the way. We're gonna be working with an artist named Cynthia Fisher. She is a mosaic artist. Our children will be doing drawings that will then be submitted. And then you, and it will be about nature drawings predominantly. We will then use those drawings to select a mural. Students in all grades will participate in varying stages of prepping the tile material, inclusive of our sixth, fifth and sixth graders actually doing the cutting and doing the installation of the materials. We're very excited about that. Our three-day window runs from the 7th, 9th, and 10th of January, so it should be a really great experience for our children. And this is a teacher who's been, Cynthia Fisher's been a teacher, has been working in mosaic workshops for 10 years now. And she's done them both throughout Springfield area as well as in Guatemala and numerous MCC Stars Grants. So we're very excited to be able to have her. She will do... So we're very excited to be able to have her. She will do the actual grouting of the project, once it is fully installed by the students. And she will assist them in learning how to do the installation. And then we will have a grand opening, um, for families to come in and see the wonderful new project. Have you selected a space yet for it? Um, I have not, because I'm gonna let her look at the different spaces and let us know what she believes, having done this before, is the most viable option for long-term use. And I've never actually done mosaics, so I'm gonna, wanna let the expert do it. So our final group is categories three and four. Uh, we have had a number of meetings over the course of the last two weeks, and I have more coming up in January, so I'm really excited about this. Um, actually, it technically began with our fire department, who came in on the morning of, um, December 12th. And we talked about fire safety programs and creating an opportunity for our kindergarten to go to the firehouse and to see the fire truck and be able to ask questions of firefighters, for us to be able to generate some opportunities for firefighters to come in and talk about fire safety, culminating in our older children creating fire safety plans for their homes, and getting an opportunity to work with their families around, um, signing off and practicing those fire safety plans. We wanna see ki, have kids see the resource that is our fire department. Um, I wanna thank Chief Wonka, it was a wonderful meeting. I really enjoyed the conversation with him and got a chance to talk about, um, my experiences with fire departments in other towns and how thrilled I am that he wants to partner with us. Um, I then, later on that same day, moved on to working with, um, our, with Chief Holtz from our police department. Um, we actually, the very next day, were able to have the police dog in. Um, she sat in the well for about an hour, and kids were able to go to the well and to be able to interact with the dog. Uh, we felt that that was a, a much safer way to do that. Uh, not all children are necessarily comfortable around dogs. And so we wanna make them feel as though it's their choice about how close they get, but we also wanna let them know that this is someone who's there to help our police department to be able to, you know, as a resource, and this is a safe opportunity for us. And so it was a great thing to do. We also, it allowed us to make sure that kids had a, a chance to get down there. And then later that same day, she, um, the police, uh, Laura and the police dog came back for being outside at recess time. And that is actually where her Fridays will be spent, is outside at recess time with the kids, which will allow for increased enjoyment and engagement with the kids. Um, the chief and I spoke, and actually just spoke to the DARE officer just this evening, and we are set to go. We've expanded the DARE program to include both fifth and sixth grade. And so this year, the fifth grade and the sixth grade will both get fifth grade content, because fifth grade is still kind of a, a bolster year on that. Uh, it's a heavy year of content. And then next year, it will be fifth grade getting fifth grade content and sixth grade getting sixth grade content. Um, so we're very excited. The dates have actually already been emailed back, and we're hoping that those dates will get approved, and we'll begin the 10-week process in the spring. Um, so we're thrilled. Uh, later that afternoon, I headed over to the Senior Center. I had an amazing opportunity to engage over there. There are some wonderful things going on in that region. Um, so I got a tour, and I got to hear about all the different groups that are there. Um, Paula was great about coming up with some ideas, and we're targeting some collaborative work in March um, that will allow us to do, um, something either with the quilting women who are there, or with the, this, um, she called them stringers, which I guess is yarn and knitting, um, which is new for me. So, so that was good, but it was a really great experience to sit and talk with her about it. Um, we wanted to be able to have something that we could do across multiple grades, and we thought that, uh, targeting March, which is a very long month in schools, would be a good opportunity. Uh, my intention is to send home permission slips and do a walking field trip sometime post-lunch for about an hour, hour and a half, and allowing kids to go over, we will get, um, core forms for all people participating at the Senior Center, so that we are, you know, following safety guidelines. But I was really thrilled. Paula was a wonderful person, and I was super excited about her willingness to work with us. The next day, on the 13th, I got to meet with the state police, and they're gonna be supporting us with a, oh, which is, so it's not on there technically, cause I didn't know they were coming, but I was super excited to meet with them. They came out to discuss their safety drills, and we are gonna be participating in that. It's a good opportunity for us as adults to see what we need to do to provide a safe environment for our children. Um, it's also a good opportunity for police and fire to practice in the building and on-site, so that they are here and ready to go and help us. And it's an opportunity for our children to understand that we as adults are trying to make sure that they are safe throughout all day, every day. Um, so we will be doing that. It is a surprise drill, so I can't actually tell you when it is, um, just that it's coming. And so we had a wonderful co, conversation, and I was excited to be working with them. And then today, I got to meet with the librarians. I met with Abigail and Andrea. We came up with a lot of ideas about how to bring in the kids. We are gonna specifically target getting the fifth and sixth graders in, because we wanna make sure that our fifth graders get all excited about when they turn 11, they can go into the young teens' room, and not before, but this is a special place that they will be able, on their 11th birthday, to join. Um, and we wanna make sure that the sixth graders, before they go off to seventh grade, have that connection, and that they really understand all of the resources and support and fun that can be had at our library. That is an incredible facility. Um, I, I don't know who in the community has been there recently, but I was wildly impressed. Um, I got to see the maker's space, I was shown this past year's t-shirts. I have heard previews, though not seen any designs, that one of my students is making next year's t-shirts, so I cannot wait to see that um, for the summer program. And we talked a lot about the idea of having not just the kindergarten, which does go monthly, but having more opportunities for other grades to also go and engage in the process. And I'm gonna be working with our art teacher around having, um, a rotating exhibit on months that there are available to us of art projects there, so we can do that. And then the last suggestion that I'd made is that we do a number of publishing projects across all of our grades, and we'd like to do, and, um, Abigail was super excited about helping me with it, um, having the kids come over and, as a final part of their publishing project, create covers that she would then barcode, and the kids could place their completed project on one of the, um, shelves in the kin, uh, the child area. And so they would have a, a work that they'd written, um, in the library. So we are really thrilled about getting that opportunity to discuss that today. Um, and then I have meetings that are on my books for, um, January, or we're, have we reached out for January? Um, Mark was kind enough to give me some other ideas, and so we reached out to, Pat's in the process of reaching out to the Conservation Commission and the Popular Mount, uh, Poplar Mountain Commission, as well as the Historical Commission. So we're hoping that by the end of January, I will have met with all three of those as well. All right. As a former library trustee and a current library trustee, we love that you are pushing the library, especially those, you know, tweens. Um, that's a demographic that we definitely wanna engage with the library, um, because library use tends to dip a little bit in those age ranges. So, um, I'm super excited for that. Um, and I'm really happy, and I really thank you for, um, uh, you know, inviting back in our community helpers. Um, we, uh, historically have had them in our school regularly, and they are, they have always been a really important part of our school. And so I'm really happy to see that you're, that you're bringing that back, cause that was, that was missing for a while. So, um, I know the community really wants that, and, and the kids will benefit from it, so- Yes. Really, really happy to hear. Good.
And you forgot to add that you even rode the bus in all of those meetings.
Yes. So Monday, I started my bus riding initiative. Uh, Monday morning, I got here at 7:30, got picked up by Bus C. And I rode through town on Bus C, greeting all the kids. It was, I think, a little unnerving for some of the kids who were probably still asleep, when I greeted them and said, "Good morning." And they're like, um, which is great. And then I rode home with them in the afternoon, and then got dropped back off here. I have already reached out to Will, our contact point, and, um, made sure that we are set to go for a Bus A ride and a Bus B ride um, in January, one at the beginning and one at the end of January. And just as a little plug, the bus driver for Bus C is tremendous. I don't know if you all know who Billy Joe is, but I just wanna put out there that that route that she does has a lot of very steep inclines, very steep declines. Monday morning had some nice wintery wet mix going on. And when I tell you the whole time, her attention to safety and the way she drove that bus, I was really impressed. So, we're very fortunate. Awesome.
I wanna say I like the idea of the focus on the older kids, to set them up for transition, so they are using our library once they leave us here. I think that's very, very important.
Yeah, and they do a lot of programming for that age group, so it's, it's really great to, to link them, link them into it.
I love, like, these reports, and they're colorful and very informative, and I appreciate that. And my only additional request is if we could still get enrollment numbers, like, by grades.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that got shared previously. I will take care of that in the next one.
And if there's any, like, upcoming events that you think is, like, you have any visitors or all-school sings or something like that, it's always just nice to see that. Um, I get it, because I'm a parent here, but I know the rest of the committee doesn't always, and they like to attend some of those things if they can, so that would be great, but keep this up.
That's super helpful, and I will, not super helpful, I will include enrollment numbers in, starting next month. Um, and I will put together a, a calendar of what's coming up through the course of each month. I will say that we do have one to, uh, excuse me, Thursday, we have our all-school sing in the afternoon. And so, um, certainly we are excited about people, um, coming to that. Uh, it should be a fun time.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, we do not have a representative from the Irving Teachers Association. Again, we got a report, um, emailed to us, so that'll be included in, uh, the packet that goes on the website. Uh, does anybody have anything that they wanna just note about that?
Um, I think it's just always important to share that grades one and two, um, do go to the Monty's March and participate in that to benefit the food bank. And each class does a lot of discussion around what it means to be a community member that can help out, and how much some funding goes a really long way to help provide meals for families. So I think that's always a great thing that they do. Um, there was also a, a field trip to UMass to attend the 50th Annual Multiband Pops Concert for grades four, five, and six. So it's nice to see field trips coming back and really getting involved. Um, and then the other thing was that grant that the art teacher got. So those are all exciting things, very exciting. Yeah, love it.
Um, I was gonna ask that, um, we had asked for a report on the, um, um, Bright Program at the last meeting, and-
Yeah, we're gonna be doing that in January.
Okay, that'll be good.
All right, all right. So, uh, next is the Pi Report.
Oh, that's me again. Okay. So, our last meeting was on Monday, December 2nd. Um, this is the last week for our annual calendar raffle. So we are requesting stubs and money due back and returned to the office by this Thursday to ensure that everyone gets entered into the drawing. Um, if you turn them in Friday, that's fine. And we'll even accept them through January, but just know that when they're submitted will be then when they are entered into those days. So if they're entered in on January 5th, it will be January 5th moving forward. It wouldn't go back to January 1st, cause we have already drawn for those names, so, um-
Sooner you get it in, the better.
Yes, exactly, and we appreciate that. Um, and then money raised from this fundraiser and other fundraisers goes to, towards special events and treats for the staff. Um, the annual Senior Scholarships Award, we have two of those that we do, and then we have other school events. So we were in deficit for a while there with the lack of being able to do some fundraisers. So last year and this year have really starting to rebuild that, and then we're really excited to be offering more opportunities and events and stuff. So anyone that's interested in attending, our next meeting is January 6th at 7:00 PM on Google Meets. And, um, Beth, we would love to extend that invite for you to come as well, so I will make sure I share that information with you. It's not until January, so no worries, and if you can come, great, if you can't, no worries, but we did wanna extend that to you as well, so. That is all I have.
Okay. Um, Budget and Personnel Committee Report. Is there any report to give? Okay. Um, the Union 28 School, uh, Joint Supervisory Committee Report. I was not able to make the last meeting.
I don't think there's been a meeting since, right?
Since our last meeting.
Okay.
Next meeting will be in January.
Yeah, thank you. So next meeting, January 13th, 7:00 PM, and those are virtual. All right, old business. Um, we have the surplus equipment update, so, um-
Um, the surplus equipment, we are starting to inventory. I would be very frank in that it's been a long time since that process has been done. Um, Eric and Tom with the technology piece, and Eric have been very helpful in getting a comprehensive list. We're also surveying what is the quality of some of the things that we have and how we can, um, uh, consolidate that. I have reached out to Brian about the process for, when we have surplus equipment here that we are not gonna use, what is the process for the town about dispersing of it? Um, and I talked with him about, um, the practice that is pretty common in Franklin County and in other counties of when you have some surplus equipment, how do we let, if we're not gonna use it, how do we let our, um, area schools like Gill and other Union 28 schools know that, hey, you know, we have these in good working order desks, is that something that you might be interested? So he has outlined what that process looks like for me. Um, so we're moving forward on that. Um, and, um, Eric is, is making sure that we have, we need to retain some, because, you know, there might be desks and storage, but if our enrollment goes up, we don't wanna have to buy new desks, right? We, we, we have some, but, um, if there are things that, for whatever reason, um, are in good working order, but we're not using, how we can get those to our partners. Um, and so we are in that process. It does involve going to the selectmen, so that will be part of the process.
Yeah, we have to, um, vote it as surplus, and then it moves to them.
Correct.
So-
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so when do you, when do you anticipate-
We will have that list at the next meeting.
In January?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll move, move forward. Um, but right now, he, there's a lot. Um, and so he's trying to inventory what, what do we have that's in great working shape that would be suitable? So we will have, we already have the list, but he's now double-checking for quality.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's not in working order, we still have to designate a surplus, so we would need really two lists.
Right.
What's gonna be basically trashed and what's, what's gonna be moved on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll anticipate that in January then?
You will have the list to vote on what we want to dispose of and what we want to see about recycling to another school.
In January?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions about that? All right, and so we're up to the REACH Special Education Program. I'm assuming that's what you're setting up?
Okay. Um, so I wanted to, um, give an update, um, about where we're at. At the last meeting, you all approved for, um, us to create a new program for students with autism or developmental delays. And I wanted to, um, give you some, uh, progress as to where we are with that implementation of that program. Um, so again, um, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were putting the needs of kids first, uh, figure out what was best for each of our students. We wanted to use our building resources for the most benefit to our students, and we wanna be phys, fiscally responsible um, with the money that the towns provide to our schools. Um, so again, this was a substantially separate program for students with autism or developmental disabilities, um, staffed by a BCBA, a special ed teacher, and an RBT, um, each student having a one-to-one support of a paraprofessional, uh, additional support from an occupational therapist and a speech therapist, um, with the instruction being specialized ABA, social groups, uh, speech groups, self-regulation groups, and the program being housed here at Irving Elementary with tuition coming- being housed here at Irving Elementary with tuition coming in from public schools specifically to start the other schools in the union. Um, so, uh, the resources that we, um, were saying that we would require, um, we have the classroom, um, we had unneeded items that have already been moved out to storage and the furniture has been arranged in the classroom. Uh, the curriculum, um, we have it in place. We're just working on getting all of the people on board with it. Um, we have created a schedule, um, for the, um, special education teacher, BCBA, the RBT, speech, and OT so that we made sure that all of those folks can support the program as well as, um, continue with their other duties within the, the, um, school. Um, we have, um, we already had an RBT here, um, that was in the, the previous, um, row. Um, we did, uh, hire one paraprofessional and then one is coming to us, um, from Leverett. Um, we had some room dividers. We thought we had more in storage, but we do need to order some more. Um, and then some of the miscellaneous supplies, um, we have ordered and are, and those things are arriving. So, um, we, um, again, um, this was just the outline for the budget. Um, we had proposed $55,000, um, for the course of the year if a pair, if we were providing the para here in Irving. If a student was coming with a para, then we would reduce that cost by the amount that the para would cost. Um, and then so, um, for the two students that we have that are enrolling in the program from other, um, places in the union, um, this would be the, the amount that we would be, um, um, tuitioning from the other districts. So for the one student, since we are providing the paraprofessional, um, for the remainder of the school year, it would be $31,000 plus. Um, and for the other student who is bringing, um, who the other district is sending their paraprofessional, um, that's about $12,000. And here's my timeline. And as you can see, I got a lot of checkboxes, which I'm really proud of. Um, so we got the approval by the school committee. We've updated the postings. We've hired a paraprofessional. Um, I've met with Irving staff. We've ordered supplies. We've contacted the families in the union for the students who'd be a good fit. Um, we've arranged the physical space. We finalized the schedules and the services. Um, our planning of the curriculum is still ongoing, but we expect that to continue. Um, we have held the IEP meetings for the students coming into the program. Um, like I said, we interviewed and hired the paraprofessionals. We finalized the staffing. Um, so the things that are left to do, um, this week and then over a couple of days over vacation, um, will be to create those contracts for the union, um, for tuition for other districts. I've created the contracts, but I'm going to have our, um, the special education lawyer that we, um, have on retainer, take a look at those and make sure that they are all set. Um, we have the physical space pretty well outlined, but we want to just make sure that's finalized. Um, we are having, um, the parents and caregivers and their children come to the program to do a tour on January 3rd. Um, I, um, all the parents, we have, um, IEP signatures from two out of the three, so I just have to get that last one done. Um, and then the contracts will be sent to the other districts to, um, sign. And then the official program date will begin on January 6th. So, um, we are, you know, we, we, when we were talking about it, we decided that we really wanted to have the students and their parents have a time to come in and be able to tour the program, um, be able to, um, you know, get a sense for the school. Um, and we wanted that time to happen before the first day of school. Um, the team here at Irving has been working really hard, um, to pull this all together and get it into place. Um, we're doing some really cool things with, um, creating some social stories for kids about, you know, this is my new school. These are the new people that are coming, that I'll be, be working with. Um, we had staff that went and observed the other students. Um, so we're, we're, um, in a really good place right now. Um, and it's really exciting that, that we're actually, it, it's going to happen. Um, and so, um, that's the, the update.
Sounds really good.
Thank you. I'm really excited about it.
I feel like you need a walk-up song.
I know, right?
Yeah.
I just had a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Um, so when we're saying the tuition is going to be one if they come with a para or another if they don't, is that only for this year because we wanted to make sure we get it up and running or is that going to be an offering going into next school year as well?
Yeah, I think it'll have to be a conversation that we have. I think, um, one of the, one of the pieces to that conversation is that the different districts have different, um, uh, contracts. And so that's kind of a, uh, that's something we'll really have to discuss in terms of, of, you know, uh, folks working in the same program, doing the same types of things and being on different contracts, if that's really how, um, we want to continue or if we really want to, um, sort of, you know, up that, uh, tuition, um, cost and, and higher, you know, having everybody be a, an Irving, um, employee. So I think that's part of the conversation. I don't think it's really been decided yet. Um, but I think that some of that has to do with, you know, what we, when we get through budget time and, and what we're looking at, um, because I certainly don't want to, um, you know, raise the budget, although it would be paid for by tuition, you know? I think those are all those kinds of conversations that we have to have. It will be paid for, but do we want to add that? Is the town willing to add on another employee, sort of, you know, all of that balancing?
Okay, yeah, because I wrote down, like, how would it work, you know, if the schedule contract is different from Irving and do they get to not be available and then that child doesn't get to come or, you know, how does that impact the child?
Yeah, so, um, it's the, the, the only difference really is the times and the person is willing to shift, um, to be able to shift and to work, the, have a work location change to here in Irving and then also be able to change the time of day. Um, so that's worked out. Um, and, and that's really the only, um, big difference. We have the same, um, calendar days, um, same, you know, Wednesdays off, all of that sort of thing. And so, um, that shouldn't be, um, I haven't, we haven't anticipated any difficulties with that. Um, and, um, you know, I think we'll, whatever bumps arise, we'll, we'll figure those out.
If I could just add, I, I just want to add though, if, if this person is coming from out of our, not in the Irving District and they are absent, what is the, what is the plan B for that? Because they're not our person. They may not be a part of our sub pool and/or our responsibility to find a sub for. So what is your plan to take care of that, especially when they're outside people?
Yeah, so we would do one of two things. I think, one, we would, um, discuss within the program, um, if we can cover it for that day, as long as it's sort of a day thing. Um, I think the other thing, um, we do have, um, Irving subs that are on the Irving list or on the, that are on the Irving list that are willing to work in that program. And then I think we could, um, build the other district for that substitute for that day if we needed to. Um, but I think that that's, um, you know, those would be the two options, I think, would be, there be to sort of cover it, um, within the program or to be able to, um, um, have a, a sub come in and, and build, um, the other district.
Does the, uh, does a support person who's coming from another school, um, with a kid, with a kid, um, do they have any responsibilities back at that school with that student? I notice there, does that student get transported and do they ride along? Uh, do they go to meetings at that other school? Does that kid have any commit, connections back there and do they go to that or?
Yeah, I think that's something that we'll have to continue to have conversations about. I think that, um, the, the transportation is, is all set. We don't need somebody to ride back and forth with them. Um, so they would be, the, the adult would be transporting themselves here to Irving and then home from their home location. Um, that, that isn't, um, an issue. Um, in terms of the, the meetings and that sort of thing, um, there's a lot that we do as a district and a lot, and then some things we do as a building. I really think we would really want to have that conversation. My, my guess would be that a lot of times it would be most applicable for them to stay here in Irving for the meetings. In terms of contract, I think that's where, um, we need to look really closely at both contracts to see what they're obligated to do. But I do think that a lot of times, um, you know, they're going to be here, they're going to be a part of this building, even if they're, um, technically an employee of somewhere else. And so I think that we would, we would very likely, um, have them attend, um, the kinds of meetings and those sorts of things that they have a contracted obligation to, um, but attend them here because I think it'll be more relevant.
No, it's just that it seems to me that, um, you know, a student coming from a different town, um, you know, maintains some connections to that town and having their one-to-one, coming from that town or being part of that town, there would be some benefits available to keep, you know, for keeping that connection or that that person could supply that connection. I, I don't know. I would just, uh, open it up to you to do. The other question I had was, is anybody thinking about other specialized programs similar to this in any of the other schools?
Yeah, but I can only do one at a time.
Absolutely. But I mean, is it, is, has it occurred to, to you, the only one we have over?
I think when you, yeah, I think when you... Look at, if you look at districts who offer internal programs like this, they are about the size of what our whole union would be in terms of being able to support it with students, right? Because, and we talked about that, like ideally five would be perfect, but it really can't run with less than three because the dynamics for students change, so their learning experience changes. So I think, just like Irving has, when we've had students who haven't been able to get what they need, they're placing them out at... We're, we're fortunate if we can get them in a nearby school so they can stay close to their community, which is always the ideal. Um, so I think the other, the other union schools are certainly thrilled to have this option because from even just a financial point, right? They're sending students out and this keeps them closer to their home community. Um, and it hasn't been, been an option. So I think, might this become a bigger program? Maybe, might it be replicated? But I think it seems, we're, we're gonna see how this goes first. But I will tell you... The response after the meeting where this was approved was, um, immediate to both Amy and myself in terms of, of emails from not just Irving. The Irving people were very, I mean, wrote love, like, this has been talked about for a long time and that it's coming, it's good for our kids. But across the union, because they see this as a, a program option for their students if they can't meet their needs in their, in their school. So I think that this is, you know, a bigger picture. It's, it's great. We're, we're also, you know, one of those students that's going to join the program is an Irving resident who we're not going to pay tuition and all that. But this really is about, we are now offering something to our students that we didn't have.
I just have one more to circle back to the, like, different contract. I think something to think about, and it's not something we need to decide on now, but if we are going to go that route of allowing external paras to, um, accompany these children, to think of, you know, if it isn't a good fit or it doesn't work out, they're technically not our employee and how we handle that and how we manage that and how we're going to, you know, review that and have a criteria or guidelines that we need to see that are met and, and follow all, like a rubric kind of in that sense. Um, and just make sure that they are kind of fitting in and, and meeting the needs and knowing that you could be there or you could be here and you still have the same guidelines and you, you know, have to adhere to the same things. Because it's harder, I think, if we're not the people that employed them. And it might feel like we don't have as much say in that. So I would just, you know, want to be aware.
I think you can speak, but these, in this case, this is a student who's already working...
Oh, yeah, no, I meant in general, like if we were to extend it next year as like an option to say, hey, we have this program, we're opening enrollment, you have two options. I don't want a school to be like, great, we'll pick that option because it seems like it's cheaper and then they just send whoever and then it ends up like not being a good fit and then the child's actually struggling. And you know what, just see, it, we don't have as much control over that if we're not the employing district. And so just want to be aware of that.
Yeah, I, I think too, um, you know, we, we do have a similar situation with, um, one of the students that we do send to a different district. Um, and, and we've had to work through that, um, to be honest. Um, and it really, um, it's a little different because it was me as a special education director for Irving, working with their district special education director. And in this case, it would be my Leverett part, right? You know, my part from the union, working with my other part from the union. And so that's where it gets a, um, you know, it's just separating it in my head. But, um, you know, I think that our, our principal team works really well together, which would be the direct, you know, um, in-the-building supervisor. Um, you know, I think that our, our relationships with, um, you know, the entire administrative team, so, um, you know, as, as long as we have the kids, um, if it's a, a, someone who's hired within our union, I think we're fine. I think if we were to open it up, we would be much more, yeah, we would be much more cautious, I think. I think the comfort level with, um, hiring someone who is qualified for one of our own union programs, I think, um, you know, there was no hesitation with saying, yes, absolutely, that's a great choice for this program. Um, and so I think that, that there is a different comfort level with that than if you're working with somebody in a different, in a different district.
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the thoughts that comes to my mind is that, um, students, as they mature, go through stages, they sometimes problems do develop. And, you know, they may be functioning at the, in, uh, in preschool all right, they may be functioning, you know, in kindergarten all right, marginally, but there's somebody there that they're used to. And if that person can transition with them to be, you know, because of the connection that they have with that person to come with them to a program, it, to me, might provide additional strengths to the program. And, uh...
Yeah, I think that's definitely going to be the case for this particular time. Um, but I think, yeah, we'll, we'll just have to analyze it as we move forward.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
I do.
You gotta yell with this crowd.
That's okay, I'm patient enough here. Um, I'd like to applaud you and the others who are putting an effort in to make this happen.
Thank you.
I also like to applaud that you've accomplished so much in such a short time since our last meeting, which is, to me, speaks with credibility. If we're not just pie in the sky, we're going to make something happen here. And making something happen that's best for the student, whoever they may be from, and also looking at the finance of, of what it could be, very much advantageous to Irving taxpayers. Instead of sending them somewhere out of district where the, where the place somebody might send somebody to, uh, and pay for itself. And, and we're not trying to make a lot of money off of this, but, but it's not going to cost the Irving taxpayers, won't cost them anything and likely save them a great deal.
Right.
Um, so looking at it strictly financial, but also best for the students. Um, and the, the questions that others on the board have raised are all very good questions. And there are situations that will come up and you just deal with them as they come up. Uh, it'd be really nice if you went along, everybody fit like a glove and everything's just fine, but sometimes there'll be some questions along the way and we'll leave it to you and the administrators to, to deal with that in the best way that you can. And I'm very confident that you will. So I, I, I don't see a downside to this for students or taxpayers or anybody else. So thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go last, but, but Dan, Dan took a little bit of my, my, you know, um, the words, um, because I was very concerned about your ability to hire. So I'm really happy to hear that you were able to hire somebody, um, and that so much has been, um, checked off your list. So that is really encouraging and, um, shocking, but in a good way shocking. Like, I'm really, I'm really happy, um, that you were able to accomplish so much. I would just, I would like to, um, suggest that we do just kind of make this a, kind of a one-year, as far as fiscally, um, speaking, a, a one-year kind of plan and then reassess. I do have some concerns with the way that, um, like when you're talking about the subs, well, the sub would then become internal. So now we're giving them the benefit of a reduced rate, but then we're using our own people as subs. So that's not really, you know, helping us out at all. We're spreading ourselves thin. I do have concerns about, even though this person might be coming from another Union 28 school, our principal is not their supervisor. So if things internally as a staff member need to be addressed, they're not the supervisor, even though they're in our building, even though they're using our supplies, even though they're interacting with our other staff members and teachers, um, students, they're not the supervisor. So that can get really... that can get really tricky. And so, you know, I definitely would like that to be kind of reassessed at the end of the year, too.
Sure.
Just to see how that's gonna work, especially when we start thinking about outside people. And, but yeah, I definitely would like to relook at the financials aspect of it at the end, after we tally up how much supplies, after we tally up, you know, how much, how many times there might have needed to be a sub, those sort of things. Because not only are we giving, we're giving them a discount because they're bringing their own paraprofessional, but they're still using the expertise of our speech and language pathologist, and our BCBA, and our whoever else, I can't remember the other titles on the list. So there's cost for that, and I think we might be cutting ourselves a little, you know, undercutting ourselves by the, the numbers that are on there.
So when I, I figured it out based on the number of hours that the, that the, those folks would have to be a part of the program, worked out their hour, hourly rate, and then divided it by the three students that would be there. And so that's what's sort of left over, because the paraprofessional is a pretty fixed cost. You know, they, it changes a little bit based on, you know, how many years you've been working, but it's a pretty fixed cost. And so to be able to have kind of your baseline cost of, of everything else, and the para can kind of move in and out of that funding calculation pretty smoothly, only because it is such a separate, like, fixed cost, and it doesn't come with, oh, this person's gonna be in there for two hours, and this person for an hour. And so the previous presentation that I did, when it was all broken down about how much each would approximately cost based on the number of hours they'd be a part of the program, that was all figured into the, what's left over when you take out the para cost.
And I, I think that's reasonable, but I think of the way that we are charged for our students being tuitioned to Gilmanagew, they're not, or, or the tech school, they're not just considered like the people cost, it's how much does it cost to run the building, divided by how many people go there, right?
Yeah.
So we're still providing heat for them, and we're still providing paper for them, and we're still providing all of the things that we need to provide, to provide to run the school. So I'm curious if we thought of it more in that way.
Sure.
The way that we are charged, for our children going to the other schools that we have tuition agreements with, or, or like the tech school, the way that they figure out how much they charge us, to just see where, how, how that compares to the number that you came up with.
Sure.
And again, I think this is great, and let's, let's do it for this year, but then let's make sure we reassess those things for next year.
Sure.
And not lock ourselves into anything.
So just, just to, to add to that, the, as a program, we've talked about, you know, in six weeks, we're gonna sit down, make sure that it's currently going well, and that we don't need to make any big changes. And so then, that would be like right before the February vacation, and then we were looking to, right around the time of the April vacation, have a, a bigger idea of, okay, now we've done this for a few months, how sustainable is this? And that's really when we'll get a good idea for how it's working programmatically, and I think that would be a really good time to start to think about, you know, is this sustainable, what we would need to change, what we would need to not change, and then getting those more specific numbers and, and putting that out.
So it's, it's three children, that's our, a, a, a current student, a student from somewhere within Union 28, and then where's the third student from?
Another Union 28 student.
Okay, so it's two Union 28 students and a current student.
Yes, a current Irving student, yep.
And that, so we, in the, when you said you hired and then is bringing, that didn't count the internal one, because they already have-
We already have, yeah, we already have an internal RBT, which is Registered Behavior Technician. It's a, another support person is already working with one student, the student who's here in Irving, so we didn't have to calculate that, that was already a part of the budget.
Okay, so there will be three students in that classroom.
There will be three students, yes.
And is there any point where they're going to try and integrate in with any of the general ed classrooms?
I think slowly. As of right now, all three students are pretty much in a similar situation, where they're pretty well isolated, because they didn't have a program that met their needs. So the idea really is to start small, and see what, you know, how much integration opportunity. I think we wanna balance their need for integration with, you know, not making sure that we're not adding too much to the, the teachers that are here, to, you know, the, the full capacity that, that people are feeling at. So I think that, that we would be, what we've said to staff is that we would be trying that in very small increments when students are, are definitely ready, with the appropriate staff, you know, support, and sort of building that up. The idea would be fantastic if we could get kids fully integrated, and then integrate them back into their home systems. That would be the, the loftiest goal that we have. But I think that, you know, for right now, what we're looking at is very brief times of integration, building towards as much as, as they're able to do.
Just in terms of numbers financially, is this gonna be entered into our budget numbers under a separate piece?
That's a great question, and that was my final piece. The, Brian Smith at the town has asked, he has confirmed with council that town meeting has to approve a new revolving fund. So that would mean that the funds that are coming for tuition would go into this revolving fund, and then be able to be paid out into, back into the program. So town meetings, he's, he's prepping for that, that, but he had asked if the school committee could confirm that they want Brian to draft an article to present to town meeting to establish this fund. And so that's what his ask was, so that we can have that go right into an account, and we can pull directly from that account to pay for the items.
So that's, that's half, that's part of it. But part of the cost of this is our existing student. So, again, coming back to the budget when we look at it, part of that'll be the revolving fund, but part of it is also our current costs.
Right.
And they ought to be grouped, it would seem to me, so that they don't get lost somewhere else. So we can, when we do our assessment of how is this working?
Sure.
We can say, well, it's working to the tune of-
Yeah, I can take a look at, at what that cost would be. It would be similar to the other, the cost of the other students. I think the reason I didn't do that at the start was because we already had all of those folks in place. We didn't have to do anything extra to be able to provide those supports in terms of our budget. They were already budgeted for, they're already a part of everything.
But they are a cost, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I think, wouldn't be necessarily in our budget, but in a separate spreadsheet just for this program. We would wanna see what percentage of that speech and language pathologist is being used up by this program, and what does that cost?
Yeah, that's one way of doing it, is to see, is to see a, a particular spreadsheet for this program.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be one way of doing it. I, I was just saying, looking at it in the, you know, in with the rest of all the lines and things, but this might be a much easier way to do it, would be, you know, you have your revolving account, and then you have this.
Yeah, I think it would get a little bit messy if we tried to put it in this. I think it would be easier to see in a separate spreadsheet, but I think, getting to the same point of, of having those, those numbers.
What is this costing overall?
Sure.
And how much of it's covered, and blah, 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 all that stuff.
Yeah, and, and, like I said, I, there, the projections were in the previous presentation that I did, but we'll definitely have some real hard numbers when we, when we do an update.
Well, I would like to move that we ask Brian to put the article in. So that is a motion.
I second that.
Okay. So, so just to be clear, so the, the motion and the second is to ha, ask Brian to draft the wording for that article that would then go into the, go on to the town meeting warrant, asking to create a revolving account, for just basically an account to dump the money into, then we could then pull it back out and use it as necessary. So I just wanna make sure everybody was clear on what the ask was, what the motion was for.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, for discussion on the motion, some, some of our revolving funds have monetary limits. I don't know if Brian needs to put one on this, well, he might, if he doesn't need to, that's fine, but people might wanna know at a town meeting, how much, what are we talking here? We gonna have a revolving fund with $600,000, or 25 bucks? So what's it gonna be?
Right.
So I don't know, maybe consult with Brian and, and just go with what he would recommend.
I do know that he spoke with council about the best way to create that, and so in that draft of the article, he might have that, I'm not sure. I've shared with him all of the information about what we're, you know, the, the tuition and all of those sorts of things, so he has the information. But certainly, if he, if he needs more, I can, I can help with that.
It may not, may not need a limit anyways.
You're right, though, there are definitely sometimes where we, you have to put-
Some, some do, maybe not, I think, I do have a question, though. I don't, I don't try and answer all the questions, I don't have answers, but I give it a shot. If we are the receiving school, and, and this is maybe different if it's out of our union, but if we're a receiving school, the sending school, is my understanding, their school committee has responsibility for that student. I mean, they can't say, we're gonna send this student with a para, and then all of a sudden, they just show up in a car and drop them off, 'cause the para can't be there that day. I'm, I'm thinking, it'll, it'll work out, I'm, I'm quite sure, but-
And there'd be contracting, please, very clearly specifying what the terms are.
Yeah. My, my other thought was, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm not experienced enough. You all have been here longer than I have been. You may have been sitting at the kitchen table and had an epiphany, and decided, I think I'll come up with this program. Or, there could have been others, and this wheel's been invented already, and we can learn from people who've, have done some of this stuff, and I'm sure you're, you're probably on that also. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm very fortunate to have a good, good solid network of, of other special education directors that are both ones that I'm personally familiar with, but also that are just, I know from, you know, networking events. And so, we've got a pretty, pretty hefty email chain going back and forth about various topics, and this was, has certainly been on that, that, that emailed list. So, yeah, I do, I definitely appreciate all the support from outside, but also, you know, there, we have a lot of really good people in the building with really great ideas that have really just stepped up to the plate. And so, you know, I think that, that we've, a lot of what's been able to be pulled together is our own resources, and that was part of it, right, to, you know, really utilize the people that we have here to, to do something pretty special. And so, so that's been really exciting to see that team come together as well.
Good.
Okay, so we do have a motion in a second. Is there anything else pertaining to the motion that we need to have a discussion about? Nope, everybody feels good? Okay. So let's go ahead and vote on that. So all in favor of the article being written for the town?
Aye.
Town meeting, I wanna keep saying town, town meeting?
Sorry, you're done.
Aye.
Aye.
And I just wanna say publicly, too, just to thank Brian Smith for helping out with this, 'cause he does kinda go above and beyond his, you know, his job description to help us quite a bit. So, especially, you know, with things like that, so.
And I will say that, you know, we reached out to him, and he was like, great, let me just figure out how to do it. So there wasn't hesitation, it was, it was, it was really wonderful to work with him as well, so I second that, yeah.
Yeah, indeed. So, yes, so we'll go ahead and have that. And then finally, if I, the last request, not the last request, let's be honest. Another request is just that, not only, at the end of the year, or intermittently, as you had laid out, that we check in with the staff. The, not only the staff working with the students, but directly, like the paraprofessionals, but the SLP, the BC, the RBT, the people that we have, just to get a sense from them, is this doable with their caseload? Because I'm, I, as I said before, I am concerned that the caseload may get too heavy, especially if we expand this program. And so I do wanna be making sure that-
Sure.
-the staff feels comfortable, and they're able to service the rest of the, of the, of the student body that needs to be serviced. I don't want the rest of our, you know, our school not getting what they need because, because we have this program. So-
Sure.
You know, and so I definitely wanna make sure that we're checking in with staff, and adjusting staffing if necessary at the end.
Yeah, definitely. And I, you know, the, the, we all, the, all of us that are a part of this program sat down to create the schedule together, so it definitely wasn't a top-down kind of thing. You know, we put some things in place, like lunch, and then kind of talked about how the day is going to look, and who would be providing services at what point in time. So everybody had complete autonomy over their contribution, and what worked for them. There were a couple of things that had to be, you know, switched around in terms of other students, but it, it worked out. There haven't been any issues where people are saying, you know, I really don't know that I'm gonna be able to see my other kids or make any of this work. So I'm hopeful that that will continue, but, you know, again, we can have other kids move in, and that changes the whole story. So I agree, we'll, we'll continue to-
And I'm very aware that sometimes things look perfect on paper, right? It looks like, it seems like it's gonna work, and then reality is, every day, you know, is a new day, and things, and things happen. And looking ahead at what our population is going to look like the following year, and does that still seem realistic to, to have that? So, yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you.
All right, so we are gonna move on to new business. We, we do have a settlement agreement between Unit B. We have already voted on the language for it, and so this is simply having it all integrated into the contract. Nope, this is not, this is not the updated contract, this is just still our settlement agreement. Do we have the updated? We've already voted.
Already voted.
We've already voted this, that's in our packet.
Yes.
Am I missing it?
Nope.
Okay, while we're looking at that, let's go on to the next bullet in new business, which is simply figuring out the February meeting date, because our vacation, the February break falls where we would normally have our meeting. So while we're just looking at that, we're gonna just go ahead and do the date, and then we'll loop back to that.
You're talking February 25.
You mean 2025?
Well, it says 24.
Oh, does it? Oh, yes, clearly, that's a misprint. Yes, February 2025. We would normally have our school committee meeting on the 18th, but that is during school vacation. So we can either have it February 11th, we can have it February 25th, or if need be, we can change it to a different day of the week, in the week before, or the week after.
You said 11, or?
25. Those are the Tuesdays, so if we were gonna keep it on a Tuesday, we would shift it either a week before or a week after. If those do not work for the committee, though, we can pick a different day, day of the week.
It's too far in advance for me to have much of anything saying no. So, I mean, I'd go for the 11th.
I am gone that week, but you do not have to schedule it around me.
Well, how about 25th, then?
25th would be better for me.
Would be better for you? Okay. And that's, that's two of, of the committee members. So the 25th of February, we will move our next meeting to.
Not the next meeting, but-
Uh, sorry, you're right, the February meeting, you're right, the next meeting is January. So our next meeting, our, I just said it again, our February meeting will be on February 25th, same time, 7:00 PM, with a policy committee meeting ahead of, at 6:30. It has us voting this, so we'll go ahead and vote it. I'm not sure we technically need to vote it, but we'll go ahead and vote it. So I'll make that motion, February 25th, 7 o'clock. Somebody wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Great. Any further discussion about that? All right, we'll just go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just trying to put it in my calendar.
Yep. Not on the calendar, it doesn't happen.
That is the truth.
The 10th, there's a joint committee meeting, or 10?
Um-
School Committee, Irving Joint Select Board.
And FinCon?
That's probably to do the budget.
Okay.
When is that meeting?
February 10th.
I don't have it on my calendar, but that's-
I have it from Robin, so it's on some calendar.
Yeah. And so what I'm saying is that time is probably, is most definitely budget.
Okay. We'll just go, I will be here about-
The 10th?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, I don't think it matters on there, but-
Yeah, okay.
So the January meeting will be when?
And sorry?
The January meeting will be when?
The January meeting will be a regular meeting, last January 21st. So we typically meet the third Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's, that's a regular meeting, that's, we would typically meet. It's just because of February vacation, I made a change to that one. So, again, the settlement agreement, we only have the draft, the, not the draft, but the-
Yeah, this is-
The one that Adam had sent over, that's why.
This one?
This one.
Okay. So I'm gonna, we've already agreed to the changes.
Yep.
This is simply more formality of me, of, of voting, once it's all nice and, and clean. Um, so, this should not hold up any implementation of any of the articles that have been voted on.
Correct.
Um, so, we will just go ahead and fix that, um, and vote it on our January meeting. Okay, so, then, um, policy review and update. So, we got these, um, these are our second reading, first vote, so we got these last time. We'll vote them, um, uh, first vote, second vote. So, we still have several opportunities to make any changes to them.
Mm-huh.
If people want to take them individually, we can. If there's something that you want to change about them, if, right now, they seem... Excuse me, I have the hiccups. If they seem okay, and, um, we want to do them as a batch, we can do that as well.
Um, vote A, C, A, B, C, C, B, E, B, B, E, E, A, E, and E, E, A, E, B as a batch for second reading.
All second.
Okay. Yeah, um, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? These have gone through the policy committee.
Yep.
Anything, you, do you, I just want to speak to anything, any of them?
No.
Okay, no need. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and no, no further discussion? All right, so, all in favor of those, um, policies being a second reading and a first vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
If you ask me to remind you to add something on...
Want to talk about before we leave?
And I even wrote it.
Okay, thank you.
But, go for it.
Whenever it's time.
Dan wanted to add something, and I do apologize, we should have done it in new business, I moved on.
That's okay. Um, I'm kind, I've done a lot of things for a long time. I'm kind of a new kid on the block here. So, I just want, and you all worked with me before, St. Mackenzie, I don't just go off on myself and just do things. I didn't think you would mind if I borrowed these tablecloths from, from the, it's like the select board used them, and they let us talk to Brian, talk to Paula, everything else, I'll bring them back tomorrow. But, the, and I've talked to Otis also, and he's custodian here, um, also, just briefly. And let them know, I, I have no authority from anybody, I just want to bring it to the board and ask. There's money in the, we have, for, we have cable, and we pay a little extra money, and it goes to buy cameras and this production kind of stuff. Um, talking to Otis, what I'd like to suggest is that we, at our next meeting, just change the little bit of the setup here a little bit. If we don't like it, you can change it back. My thought is, if there's a, a short table, maybe coming out three or four feet on that end, and three or four feet on this end, so we've got the superintendent's looking at us, we're not all going like this all the time. And when Kate Williams here, the, the financial person, and we're part of a team, but we're not kind of quite going like this so much. Um, and if we have a table, not to be exactly like the select board has, but a table where people can sit with a, and a microphone, they want to talk, they don't have to stand there for 15 minutes, uh, again, uh, kind of on a prep, uh, this area, sort of. And, uh, the, the, the audience, we got 20 chairs and three people show up, but, but, so it's not a, a big change, but just a kind of an angle, so they can all see what's going on. And in talking to Otis, he said it might require we have one more camera. Now, like $1,400, give or take a little, it's up to Brian, and he are going to be talking about equipment needs. And, and it's coming from the money that people paying from the cable. It's not tax money, it's not our budget. Um, and I'd just like to go with what they recommend, to make it whatever need to, so that we all seem to be a little bit more involved as a team. And, and again, if, if, if we arrange the next meeting and somebody doesn't like it, we can rearrange it some other way. But then, we're just going to do it on my own, unless we have to buy a half dozen tablecloths, so. And the, the other thing, I called up the sign place. The select board has a banner just hangs over, says Select Board. And we might have one just says Irving School Committees for the production, so that people can see, a little more professional, and they cost about 100 bucks, but hopefully, because it's all part of the production stuff, it'll all come from this fund. So, uh, I, I don't know if I need, I'd, I'd move that we do that, if, 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 if there's a second or any disagreement or whatever.
Well, for discussion, we need a second, so I second it. I was going to point out one thing, that while we only have a few people here, um, I went online and double-checked with the, how many people were viewing us. It was 150.
Great, that's great.
It's over 150.
Great.
Were checking in on the YouTube channel and looking at us.
Great, that's great. It'd make it better for everybody. And, and if, if they're content to stay home, that's fine. If they want to come here and warm up a couple of these chairs, that'd be great, too.
I will say, the first thing I noticed were the tablecloths when I walked in, and I was like, oh, look how fancy we are.
I know.
I appreciate it, I do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That looks good, so.
I agree. Thank you, Dan, for feeding this place up.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm in, you know, I'm in favor, and I think that's great. And, um, and we also had been discussing having, um, different name tags, um, so that they're a little bit more official-looking as well, and there is also money available for that, so it's not a huge cost. Um, but, you know, just these things that just make it, make it more, um, make it nicer to have these meetings. And, um, so, I'm in favor of it. Um, do we want to have any more discussion? And yes, my, I do, my neck does.
More people here would be refreshments.
I mean, budget time usually has more people come.
Come with the season.
Yes, yes.
Well, we don't need that.
It, it happens, it ebbs and flows. Um, uh, yeah, so, uh, so we do have a motion and a second, um, to implement some of those changes that were made, and to, um, you know, look into getting the, the ca- uh, it's not our budget, so there's really nothing we can do as far as, like, expending that money, except to say that this is, we would like to have this, to have this done.
Okay.
Um, we don't control that money, so, but, but...
If, if they think that's an appropriate use of the money,
Yes.
then I would go on the advice of Otis and, and Brian as to how to accomplish getting it done.
Yeah. So, what we're voting really is to, is to empower you to go and have those conversations and say that we support that.
Thank you.
Is basically what we're doing, which I am in support of. So, um, any other discussion about that? Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dan. I appreciate you thinking about those things.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, at this point, if there's, uh, nothing else that people want to bring up, we're, we will move into executive session. We, um, just to do that quickly, before we do that, we will, um, we are going to be starting negotiations with, it is now combined Unit A and Unit B. So, um, one of the things that we'll need to do also is create the negotiating team from the school committee. Um, and then, um, and then we'll go ahead and pick dates and start that process of, of, um, preparing for negotiation. So, um, so in accordance with the open meeting law, chapter, um, 30A, section 21, hang on.
Aye.
Section 21A, I know it's getting too late in the day. Um, I will move in, to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining. Um, this will be it, we won't come back out and do any other business, so we will close out the meeting here. Um, we'll move into executive session, we'll do our part, but by all means, you all can go home. We will not do any other business in open session tonight. Um, so, before we move in...
Are you inviting anyone in?
Um, not at this stage.
Okay.
Um, but before we move into executive session, so I just want to, um, say again that our next school committee meeting will be January 21st at 7:00 with the, with the policy meeting before it at 6:30. So, then, we'll need to make a motion to, um, end clo- um, end open session, and then move executive, move into executive session with a roll call vote. Okay. Okay, we need a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
It's part of discussion before we go into executive session, I want to mention, I forgot one thing.
Oh.
Uh, this table also, I would like to include the principal, I believe we're out in the cold.
Yeah, 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 agree.
Very good idea.
Agree. Um, thank you. Um, so, uh, we have a motion and a second to adjourn from, uh, uh, open session, and then we'll do a roll call vote to go into executive session. Not, or, actually, we can do it all as one, to move into executive session, not to return to open session. Okay, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Bailey, aye?
Bailey Little, aye.
Blatchley, aye.
Emma, aye.
All right. We thank you all for coming. Thank you for coming.